Good afternoon, everyone. This is our meeting of the Hamilton County Commissioners, December 17, 2024. It's a legislative meeting here on a Tuesday, which is unusual, but we're trying to wrap up some items today. This is our last meeting of the year, so before we get any further, happy holidays to everyone. Hope everybody has an enjoyable break, but we've got some business to do today to figure everything out. So we've got some really exciting items on the agenda. So before we get started, if we could run down the dais and introduce?
Kristi Rochel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Commissioner.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. I'm going to offer a motion to excuse Commissioner Reese.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Shall we start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join in silent prayer? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
I don't have any public comment cards. Do we have anybody online? Okay, all right, very good. We'll move to comments of Commissioners. Commissioner O'Dumas, do you have anything today?
I do.
Okay.
And I'll talk about the other items later, but I had the White House briefing, which I just printed off, but I don't have it with me, but I'll talk about it in, no, I won't talk about it in 2025. Maybe I'll bring it up a little later because it was important. I attended the visit Cincy Supplier Mixer. I was one of their speakers for DEI and the importance of diversity, and I gave them actually a challenge because we don't know what 2025 looks like, and we've moved so far ahead that we need to be able to say no, that we're not going back, we're going to continue to move forward because I made the statement, what if everybody looked like me, talked like me, thought like me? What a boring world it would be. So we need other people with different experiences and expertise, of course, and cultures to be a part of our administration, to be a part of our suppliers, to be a part of everything that we do in all the companies. So I gave them a challenge to make sure that they stay strong and do what needs to happen, and Hamilton County has recognized how important diversity is, and I certainly appreciate that. I had a meeting regarding food insecurity with individuals from UC. A webinar was, it was awesome, and I think we need to be doing more to help the students, and they have a collaboration with Xavier and UC, and so we'll be doing more and seeing if they can put in for some grants. So it was a new group for me, and I'm glad I was able to talk to them. I met with Phil Beck earlier today about an opportunity for the county down on the banks, so I'm excited about. You'll hear more about it in 2025. And those are my, oh, I have a couple other things. I just wanted to briefly say about 2024, what a great year it has been. Just proud to be a Commissioner on this board and how progressive we are. And just to point out a few things, the 30% property tax that we were able to pass, not knowing if we'll be able to do it next year, but I'm really happy about that. We have a 911 EMA building that's being, being built, and we'll be going into that maybe late '25. We got land, purchased land for the Animal Care Center. We knew that we needed a new place that's overcrowded, not what we want, the quality of services for our animals or our staff. And also, we'll be moving into Mercy Health Flex, and it will allow for our staff to consolidate and also have a nicer environment to work in, so I'm just really happy about that. And of course, our regional complex groundbreaking is 77 years it's been in the Lincoln Heights, Evendale area, and so we're able to break ground and build another facility. And then we're preparing a satellite office in Forest Park. I always talked about that some of our staff need to be out in other areas, not just downtown, and so we're preparing a satellite office for some offices to go there. And, oh, and we're also continuing to add more money through ARPA, what was left over, some of it, for seniors for home repair. So I could go on and on and on, but I know you guys probably don't want to hear it all, but if you just look at our website and all the things that we've done, I couldn't be more proud to be with this group of ladies in the absence also. We've just done some great things, and so with collaboration, we have disagreements sometimes, but we were able to agree on important things, and we're able to move forward. So I'm just really proud of what we've done for '24.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of things. The Commission on Women and Girls met on Saturday. This is a group that meets once a month on Saturdays, it's all volunteers, and I just want to recognize their service to the county. We recognize them when the report comes forward and the recommendations come forward, but they meet all year long, and it's really an impressive group of individuals that are really dedicated to moving the issues of women and girls forward in this county. So I want to thank them for their service and, you know, ongoing work on issues that are important to the community. I was too going to mention the Mercy Building. We've got a couple open houses on Friday, and then a community, there's a community open house on Saturday, so really excited about kind of showing off the Mercy Building and making sure that the employees have an opportunity to go through that building. Some of them will be working from that building, and I think it's a pretty exciting opportunity for them. And then, Commissioner, as you say, we've got a lot accomplished this year. We've talked about it as we've rolled things out. Big, big items, big things that this board has been able to accomplish. Moving into next year, I do want to highlight just a couple of things that will be different. We are moving our meetings instead of 1:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're moving our meetings to 10:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. All three Commissioners have agreed to this change. We feel like it'll make it easier for the public and for the administration to get organized and ready and prepared for the meetings and participate in the meetings, so we're hoping that that will be a positive change. We're also talking about quarterly meetings outside the campus or outside the building in the evenings. We used to do these monthly. I think we're going to shoot for quarterly this time and go out into the community, and Commissioner, as you say, take, take our work to the communities, let them highlight what they're doing in partnership with us, but also give them an opportunity to participate in a different kind of way out as we take it to different villages and townships throughout the county. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank my colleagues, the administration and staff for all the hard work. This has been a really hectic, busy year. I mean, I can say that about today, I can say that about every day down here at the county. We are busy, and it's generally pretty good stuff. And so Administrator Alito, I especially want to thank you for all the hard work and keeping us on track, and those that are, Holly, the woman that means business out in the audience, so, and really all the staff that has worked really so hard to move this county forward, really, really appreciate it. Certainly not the Commissioners that are doing the work every day, it's, it's the staff. So thanks, everybody, and happy holidays to everyone. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of quick comments. Just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday season. I want to in particular thank the Board for all of your guidance this year and all the great work that we've gotten done together. We've, as you indicated, and I won't belabor the point, we've gotten just a ton of work done this year across a range of different items that have made this county a better place. You know, I think you always try to mark your, your progress on anything by is, is this community a better place at this time than it was last year at this time? And I think every year we've been able to say that, that yes, it is, and this county is making a difference and making that happen. So I want to thank the Board for your, your guidance and support as we've moved forward throughout the year. Want to thank the county's leadership team for all their hard work, all the department heads, all the staff, all of our partnering agencies, the help of the Prosecutor's Office as we've, as we've moved forward this year. We've got a busy year coming up next year. You both have mentioned a couple of projects. I think we were just reviewing it in our team meeting the other day. I think we might, might have more county construction happening next year at one time, specifically on county assets than we have, certainly since I've been here over the past 20 years or so. So it'll be an exciting year, looking forward to, to getting into it in January. As you've indicated though, we still have some things to wrap up this year, so happy to bring forward a couple of by-leaves at this point, Commissioners. Item by-leave one in your packet, and we've got three by-leaves today. Item by-leave one, this is, this is budget adjustment number 48. This is, I'll just read the resolution title. It is $34.4 million in bond proceeds for facilities and parking projects and $18.2 million in parking reserves for the Finley Garage Project. This is essentially allocating the bond proceeds from, that we issued earlier this week, and just over $18 million in parking and restricted fund reserves to various projects throughout the county, including the Finley Market Garage, Banks Phase 3C, the 911 EMA Facility Project, performance contracting work, and the locks and window screens at, at the Justice Center. So I want to thank John and all, and our finance team for a great job issuing debt this past week to support a lot of these projects, did it with a good interest rate, so it fits within our, our budget as we proposed for 2025, and offer this for the, the Board's approval with the county certainly, county administration recommends approval. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to have John speak more to it.
I was wondering, could you tell us what the interest rate is? The 3.6?
Thought it was 3.6, yes.
I just want to highlight it.
I think we were about, about 3.5 all in, so.
So that's good.
That's good.
Do you have anything to add?
I don't, no.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Let's think of something for.
Here, you know.
No, I have no.
Guest appearance.
Yeah, I have no questions, yeah.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, why don't we do these one at a time? So I'm going to make a motion to approve of by-leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leave two in your packet, this is a resolution amending our ARPA funding plan and reallocating funding to the Council on Aging for the Senior Utility Assistance Program in the amount of $42,142, and there is additional amount of $4,689 being allocated to administrative costs and salaries. I will note this is part of the allocate, reallocation plan the Board was briefed on and is part of the work that we are doing to make sure that all of these dollars are obligated before the obligation deadline at the end of this year, to make sure that all of our ARPA dollars are in fact obligated and spent versus having to send money back to, to DC on this. So with that, I recommend approval, Commissioners.
Does that roll into by-leave three?
It does roll into by-leave three, yes. By-leave number three is amending the agreement with Council on Aging to administer the Senior Utility Assistance Program and amending that amount by $42,142.69 to a new total of $520,492.09.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions?
No questions. I just wanted to comment about how staff had to spend down for the ARPA monies, and we are almost down to the penny of places that need the money, and so they did just a wonderful job using that money.
Yeah, I was going to mention the same. This is our second tranche, so CARES was the first.
Yeah.
ARPA was the second. ARPA gets an awful lot of attention, which is fine, but we went through this twice, and Holly Christman again helped quite a bit, and Sarah, I think, is in the room as well. Really did a stellar job. You know as well as I do that other counties, not everybody spent all this money down.
Right.
And we were able to do it, and, and when I say spend it down, I mean to the benefit of the taxpayers, to provide much-needed relief to people in the county and also provide funding for some transformative projects that we have all agreed to. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Holly, for all the hard work on this, and to the staff, because it was no small feat to spend out the ARPA dollars and get that all in on time. So very, very grateful for all the work that you've done.
Commissioners, if I could, just, just very quickly, and I appreciate you Commissioners highlighting that, and I just want to also just note, and you, you all have mentioned it in prior meetings, but not only the work getting the money out, but the work of, of staff led by the Board in initially, you know, you can remember back when CARES first started, when ARPA first started, there were a lot of other communities that were just, spend, 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 just get this started, just get the money out the door, and we actually took the time to be deliberate about it. We went out, we held a process, we met with a huge number of stakeholders throughout the community to make sure that when we got to this point, we were spending money even here at the last minute, not just randomly, but in accordance with Board policy to make sure that we were using these monies in the most effective way possible. So I just want to thank staff for doing that.
And I remember other counties asking for what our process was because it was so well done, particularly when it came to the community engagement piece. It's hard to remember back, I think, I mean, I've kind of blocked it out. You know, all that COVID time, it's like, oh my gosh, but what a stressful time that was. And when we first got the money, trying to understand, you know, what the parameters were from the federal government, trying to sort out the language, were we allowed to do what we're not allowed to do, and it took a lot of work to figure all that out. So, yeah, just kudos.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to approve of by-leaves two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the regular agenda. We've got MSD. Hello and welcome. welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm DeGresia for MSD. I also have Sarah Kramer with me today, Principal Engineer for MSD. Just one final item for MSD for the year. This is a resolution to approve a settlement agreement between the county, the city, and our design build firm for MSD's Mill Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Main Substation Improvements project. The purpose of that project was to replace all the high and medium voltage assets in the main electrical substation that distributes power to the Mill Creek Plant, our largest plant. This project reached substantial completion in April of 2024, so this year, and we're anticipating final completion in the first quarter of next year. So the purpose of this proposed settlement agreement is to resolve all currently outstanding claims related to the project between MSD and the design build firm so we can wrap this project up. We're not requesting any additional funding with this legislation, just approval of the agreement itself.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions?
No, we've thoroughly reviewed this, and so I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. I'm going to move that we approve of item one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Lauren.
Too.
All right, we're going to move now to the consent agenda. Administrator Ludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. Walk through this briefly. Item number two on your agenda, on the consent agenda, this is a resolution recognizing and authorizing a grant with housing opportunities made equal. The county is actually getting funding under this, $60,000 over three years to support the county's Help Center, to support eviction prevention and tenants' rights education over the course of three years. Item number three is the administration's actions through November 30th of 2024. Item number four is an agreement with the Community Action Agency to provide additional mortgage and property tax assistance for county residents in the amount of $100,000. Item number five is an amendment to the agreement with Norwood to provide additional funding to allow them to fully complete the Elm Avenue Flood Mitigation Project. That is, at one point, the total amount of the agreement is now 2.3 million. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the Third Amendment with CDF to provide $2.1 million of additional funding to CDF for affordable housing. This, at the board's direction, also reserves $1 million for the potential implementation of a Tiny Homes project, which will be reviewed by the administration in coordination with CDF throughout the beginning of the next year. And we hope to provide something back to the board in the second quarter of next year on a Tiny Homes project. Item seven is a resolution authorizing a reinstatement of a grant agreement with Montgomery, Ohio. This extends the term through January 31st of 2025. Item number eight is a resolution extending the 2024 contract with Cincinnati Animal Care for animal care services. This is, the total amount of our agreement is 3.66 million. Really, what this does is just extend the current terms of the contract into 2025 so that we can negotiate a new agreement, at which point the agreement will be reconciled. But this just extends the contract so that we can negotiate those new terms at the beginning of 2025. Item number nine is authorizing the award of ITB 089-24. This is an agreement with the Bra Kemple relating to courthouse common pleas technology upgrades for $833,966. This is ARPA funding. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the county auditor to approve and make payments, essentially to pay bills for the board of county commissioners as authorized under the Ohio Revised Code. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the payment of sales tax for two bills received by Developmental Disability Services totaling $23.90. Item 12 is a resolution accepting the lowest and best bid and authorizing an agreement with United Electric Company. This is for broadcast cabling project at Paycor Stadium in the amount of $5.745 million. This funding comes from the pre-renovation budget as well as some funding from the 2025 capital budget previously approved by the board. Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing a Fourth Amendment to an agreement with the Port Authority related to site readiness, $622,000. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the county and the Hamilton County General Health District for inspection of solid waste facilities in the county at $339,365. Item 15 is a report of no objections to one liquor permit, as reported by the Hamilton County Sheriff. And that completes your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. We have a couple of items here, and we've got some people in the audience related to these items. And so I wanted to give those folks an opportunity to speak if they'd like. The first one, as we look at items four, five, and six, these are the reallocation of the ARPA dollars. And item number six in particular goes to CDF, who is our fantastic partner when it comes to all things housing. And we've been able to leverage a lot of money with the city and the private sector to do some really great work providing affordable housing in this community. So Luke Blocher is here. So Luke, would you like to come forward and speak to item six a little bit and give us an update on where we are here? Because we just keep adding money to this fund, and it would be great to know, get a little update from where we are. And we also have talked a little bit about Tiny Homes, Commissioner Dumas and myself. So a little bit of an update on that one.
Sure. Well, first of all, just thank you very much. As always, it is great to be here. I want to also comment on the garage. I heard it mentioned earlier. I think I've said this to you, Commissioner Drehouse, but that really is a tremendous garage. And it's an incredible public asset, and I'm blown away every day when I drive by it that we have in this community. So thank you for having the vision for that. It is. It is amazing. So again, Luke Blocher from Cincinnati Development Fund. We are very honored and pleased and proud of the partnership with the county. I want to echo the many comments that were made in praise of the county administration. This is a real partnership. We talk a lot. We share information a lot, and I think it's making this work well. You all mentioned, Administrator Ludo and Commissioner Drehouse, you mentioned the sort of process that the county went through at the beginning of this ARPA process to identify ideas that could have impacts. And we think about that a lot, because at that time, around two plus years ago, this was an idea. The idea that if you were to combine funding from several different public and private sources with an entity like a CDF, that that could be a better way to have bigger impacts. And we believed it was the right idea, but it was fundamentally an idea. And I think what we are proud to say today is that the idea is working. I think the investment, the continued investment of the county today reflects the agreement around that idea. As far as sort of where things are right now, we're actually getting ready to issue a two-year sort of summary report. So I don't want to steal the thunder from what is in there. But I can say on two points. One, I think it's, it is, it is sort of on track with where we were, what we were sort of reporting last year. So it's been a consistency. And then also, this, we are amending a contract today, and in that contract with the county, there were targets. And I think we've reported this already, but we've already sort of gotten past those initial targets. And I think that is a testament, again, to just, this was a good idea. And then the partnership between the county and CDF and all the other investors in this is really working well. There's one last thing I would say, and I think it's really important to talk about when we talk about this idea, is it was an incredibly, and you all say it, and I agree with it, it was incredibly visionary commitment to make. And the first reason was you were solving immediate problems. There were immediate needs. There were projects that were stuck. There was immediate need for funding. And we were able to go and meet that immediate need in a way that would not have been possible but for this commitment. But there was also, and continues to be, a big long-term impact, which is people are, we were solving for an immediate need of projects that were out there. And now we're experiencing new projects that are coming along because of this funding. And that, I think, is the most exciting part about this, is that you made a one-time investment that is going to have continued longer-term impacts, because people are developing projects, pursuing projects out in the county, pursuing projects for particular communities like disabled residents, returning citizens, that probably wouldn't have been pursued before because they wouldn't have thought there would be support for it. And so I'm excited to keep coming back to give you more updates on those projects. They're in the works right now. They're very exciting. I've told Holly about many of them. I've sworn her to secrecy, but if you can try to convince her to tell you any secrets, you can get the information from her. But hopefully soon we'll be here with new projects like that, that really reflect, again, what is really important about this, that it is a, it was an incredibly smart thing to do in the short term, but even more, it's going to be, the long-term impact of this is going to be really, really exciting. And so we're just very grateful for the partnership and grateful for the continued support today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the partnership. You guys are doing the work day in, day out, and it's really been an amazing thing to watch. You know, all these projects come to fruition. So thanks so much for your work on this, Luke, and to the team over at CDF. The other item where we've got some guests is item number 13. So we've got Melissa Johnson from the port and Kathleen Kennedy from Springfield Township. If you would like to illuminate a little bit on this project, we'd be happy to hear it.
Happy to. Melissa Johnson with the Cincinnati Port Authority. Thank you for having us again. We've done a lot of good things this year together, and we're happy to continue that here. I just want to iterate before talking a little bit about this project, that the work that we do collectively as an organization in partnership with our communities is really complicated. A lot of this real estate is well overlooked, highly compromised, it's chronic, it's dangerous at times. And I think that this is a situation that we're also kind of facing this on this particular project in Springfield Township. So we are grateful for the site readiness work. We have tried to be judicious and thoughtful about how we've utilized it, pushed it forward, and we think this is a great way to partner this money with other funds that we have, from a federal EPA grant to some financial partnership that we have with the township. But this is also going to be a really good opportunity, I think, down the road as we get this property stabilized to attract more job-creating entities and new users. So it's really fantastic. It's a six-acre parcel that I think has great visibility for the community and I think is a strategic asset also for Springfield Township. But we couldn't iterate enough the partnership and your faith in the work that we do, and we are very grateful that we've been able to kind of take these funds, push them forward, and again, like partner them with other resources along the way. But I'm happy to answer questions, but I also want to give Kathleen an opportunity to speak on behalf of the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Kathleen Kennedy with Springfield Township, and I just want to reiterate what Melissa Johnson with the port just stated about the partnership and how grateful the township is for your support and consideration of this project. It's probably taken us six or seven years to even get it in a legal position, to get it to this point where the port could even potentially acquire the site. And the township, this is going to be too much of a lift for us to try to tackle on our own. It's a textbook, Brownfield site in a portion of the township that I think is positioned in, you know, a strategic location for, it has a lot of potential for redevelopment. And with your support and the support, the technical support of the Port Authority, I'm just excited to see what can happen next. So thank you very much.
And thank you both for being here. Really appreciate it. Commissioner, I understand they're offering tours of the Brownfield site. So if you would, I'm going to, now, listen, I'm going to take them. I'm sure it's a mud pit, but we're going. It's January.
If you're interested in places that look like the movie set of a zombie apocalypse movie, it's a great place to spend a little bit of time.
We'll look forward to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to take you anytime.
Yes.
Just want to make sure you're aware of it, Commissioner, and can you embrace that opportunity. But no, thank you. Springfield Township has been a great part. We're doing great things up there. You guys are rocking it. So thank you both for coming in. And then while we're on it, we've got another guest here from Norwood. Senora Powers is here for item number five. This is the Stormwater Project. This is another ARPA project. So thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to be here to express the appreciation of the community, my own appreciation for supporting this project. Now, there are only so many agenda items that receive a round of applause at a council meeting, but approving this contract was one of those. This is just a wonderful thing for us. So thank you all very much. And thank you to the administration for their support as well.
Really appreciate you being here. We remember those photos of the flooding in Norwood. That was bad business. So thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, do you have anything other than those items to bring attention to?
Sure. Item six, we talked earlier. I would like to ask, did Luke leave?
Oh, he just left.
So Luke, do you have a date for when you're coming for the two-year report? I know he left. So I know Holly's here.
Well, unless we have a sense of it, we'll try to nail that down. We'll do a, let's do that at a staff meeting coming up.
Do you have an idea? Because what Luke said, if you can come up, Holly, please.
Sending him a note as we speak.
Okay, because it is a two-year report, which is unusual. We usually have people record, report sooner than that. And so, and I understand his statements, but they were a little general for me. So.
Commissioner, if I could add, they do report to us quarterly as part of their requirements per the agreement. And so to date, this is as of probably their last report in September, approximately 22 million is in the process of being deployed, and that's going to create 745 units of housing.
So that's real good to know about the quarterly reports, too. So that makes me feel a little better. And also, I wanted to speak to item six as it relates to the 36 million. And I asked my colleagues, as we looked at our budget, we had down assessed tiny homes. And so I said, well, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And my colleagues agreed with the 1 million. So I certainly appreciate that. Thank you. And then item eight, the animal care for animals, they really have been working very hard with the conditions they've been given with overcrowding of the animals, and I certainly appreciate that. The other thing I appreciate, I reached out to staff, John Bruegen, about transparency, because the last vendor we had, that was the problem. We didn't have transparency. And he sent me a report from the animal care facility, and it was just the greatest specific report as relates to what they're doing at the animal care. And Jeff is going, our administrator's going to make sure all the commissioners get it when they send in those reports. So they're doing a fantastic job over there. Lastly, number 13 on the, let's see, electrical agreement. Is that the electric? No, it was.
It's 12.
12, thank you. So Jeff, you said that's for Paycor?
Yes, Commissioner, that is the broadcast cabling for Paycor.
Paycor.
Right, with United Electric, correct.
Correct. And it's 5.745 million.
Correct.
And I'm just repeating it, because I want people to know that we are giving money in our due diligence as it relates to repair at Paycor. So you kind of went through that fast, but it needs to be said. That's not a, you know, just a little bit in a bucket, but 5.7 million is a lot of money. So we're trying to do what we need to do and be responsible. So, and that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items two through 15.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
All right. I believe that does it, Commissioner?
Yes.
If there's anything else. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you all for your work. And with that, I'm going to make a.
Happy holidays. Stay safe. Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.